Good evening, everyone. This is Meeting of the Stoughton Common Council. This is Tuesday, February 25th. We will start with the roll calls, as long as Candy was ready for that. I kind of sprung that.
I am all ready.
Perfect.
Okay. What's next, Scanlon?
I see you're online.
Yeah. Mayaski.
Here.
Here.
Hatton.
Here.
Caravella.
Here.
Butler.
Absent and excused.
Okay. Thank you. Hirsch.
Here.
Durlucky.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Thank you. We have nine Alders present. We have three Alders absent and excused.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And we are certified and compliant with open meetings laws, and we do have a quorum present. First bit up that we have is a notice for public hearings, so the City of Stoughton Comprehensive Plan update as proposed by or the proposed public participation plan adoption of the resolution. So we will close the regular public meeting and reopen the meeting for the public hearing. And I did not ask anyone here to speak on behalf of the public hearing.
You have wiretap.
All right. And then just set. Very perfect. You got it.
Thank you.
All set. Okay. So hi, everyone. My name's Lisa Moore. I'm joined with Kelly LaPointe. We also have Lee Carhair from Double Forte online. She will introduce herself in a few moments here. We want to get started to kick off the comprehensive plan update. Thank you. Awesome. So for the agenda, we're just going to go over introductions, review the project timeline. We will discuss the comprehensive plan process. We will discuss the public engagement process. And then finally, we will ask that you adopt the public participation plan that's been included in your packet. So a little bit about us. Like I said, I'm Lisa Moore, so I'm a community economic development consultant at Becker Professional Services. Many of you know Becker Professional Services is located here in Stoughton on Main Street. We do all things planning, community development. We have clients throughout the state, and we are your project leaders for the comprehensive plan update. So what is a comprehensive plan? Some of you have gone through the process in the past, and you know that the comprehensive plan is a required document that all communities must have. That's Wisconsin State statute. Additionally, the comprehensive plan must be updated every 10 years. The reason they like to update every 10 years, data changes, US Census comes out, societal changes, we just made it through a pandemic, excuse me, made it through a pandemic, and other aspects of the community change, we want to make sure we are highlighting those within the new plan. So a comprehensive plan is a guide. Think of it as your social, physical, and economic development guide. There's nine different elements to the plan. Those are your chapters. They're all required by the Wisconsin State statute, and we go through and we identify data, we look at maps, and we create goals and strategies for that plan. And also, it's a vision for the next 20 years. So we are starting now, but that vision goes to 2046. And then again, the planned content, high level here, so looking at the data analysis, like I said before, we will have public surveys, public open houses, visioning sessions, all of that is to gather the input from the public so that we can implement that and share that through the report. Another important piece of this is the goals and strategies. So each chapters have their own goals, strategies, and objectives, and those must be updated every 10 years as well. We'll look at the planning facilities, land uses, all of that that's already been created here at the City of Stoughton. Hello, everyone. All right. Lisa said, hey, let's make this plan fun and engaging. I'm like, okay, game on. So in the PowerPoint, you'll see a lot of different colors. So this is going to be the theme for Stoughton's comp plan as we roll out both public engagement and the final report. So on the left-hand side, you'll see kind of some art deco-inspired shapes. This pays homage to the Opera House. When I was creating this, I also wanted to bring a little bit of Norwegian Huga into it, but I can't just put things on paper because it needs to make sense to me. So if you look even closer with artistic eye, the shapes basically felt Stoughton from top to bottom, so S-T-O-U-G-H-T-O-N. So we'll be bringing these shapes into different aspects throughout the plan and public materials. This is a draft of the final report cover page. And again, it's just trying to make it engaging to read. As we talked about the nine chapters, these are required by the state, so again, bringing those shapes in and honoring the different chapters that we'll be talking about and covering and researching, issues and opportunities, agriculture, natural and cultural resources, intergovernmental cooperation, housing, economic development, land use, utilities, and community facilities, transportation, and implementation. Excellent. So looking at the timeline, so everyone is clear, this is a two-phase project. We're starting with Phase One here. As you can see, listed on the bullet points, we're at the council meeting for the public participation to be approved. Then we go down, we see the committee-level meetings that each committee is assigned to a chapter within the comprehensive plan. I'll have a little more detail on one of the next slides here about that. And then so on with some of the public engagement events, most notably the public survey opening as well as the vision planning sessions opening throughout the summer. And then looking at Phase Two, we will have a draft, one for the comprehensive plan, two Plan Commission in about March 2026. Any edits, comments on that, we will be implementing for the draft, too. We will then host a presentation for Plan Commission, have any final thoughts, edits, and then finally, in June 2026, we will ask that the comprehensive plan is approved by you all here at City Council. And then just a general overview, going to the public participation plan, so we really want to make sure we had focus groups implemented into that plan, so city personnel, for example, the leadership committee, housing authority, all of that, just making sure we have voices heard that have already had established committees. We will host in-person events, we have take-home, independent surveys, do-it-yourself toolkits, just all encompassing, making sure we're hitting every demographic and providing an inclusive space for comments. And then, yes, like I said, here is the committees assigned to the chapters, so some of you may sit on these committees. You will review not the whole entire chapter, but portions of that chapter. We'll have an educational piece along with a review and discussion. Those will be scheduled, like I said, in March and April. And then now, I'd like to turn it over to Lee Carhair. She is our Double Forte Public Relations expert. She will be helping us with the engagement. She is online, so if we can transition somehow to get her to be able to speak, that would be great.
I turned my... Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Emily Carhair, I'm with Double Forte, and we are so excited to be working with you. Oh, what did you do? Okay, great. On the comprehensive plan and to do everything we can to get as many people as possible to contribute and input to your vision into the plan, because as we all know, the more inputs we get, the better planning we can do. And that is our goal, is to reach as many people as possible, as many times as possible, to inspire them to participate. So there's a lot in the... There's a lot to do, but I'm just going to top-line it for you all, and I'm happy to answer any questions later. So the first piece on this vision planning workshop on June 4th, right now, it's tentatively scheduled for the fire station training room. We have lots of different activity stations where a lot of people can participate and work on maps and ideas and all that kind of stuff. The activity stations there, and then in terms of several different public events that will be highly publicized and noticed for people throughout the City of Stoughton. So the coffee break festival on August 16th, the gazebo music at August 28th, the Becker Professional Services, since they're right on Main Street, they're going to have several different pop-up activities where people can just stop on by and add their comments onto the workshop boards and coffee with the mayor, more than one if we can do it, so that people will be inspired to come and talk and give us their idea for the future of Stoughton. There's lots of different things we'll be doing in terms of in-person, online surveys, this take-home workshop that we talked about, the DOA toolkit, working with different community groups in the City of Stoughton to get as many groups to do this together as possible, because better ideas come with more participation, more people, and sort of that's our idea on there. From a project awareness perspective, we're looking at sort of a surround sound idea here with social media, using the City of Stoughton's Facebook page, and then members, committee members being able to share, and then people that we're going to identify in the community who can share among their own Facebook pages, too, to get that network effect, the public engagement sections, direct email, printed mail, printed media in terms of mailers, branded business cards with the QR code that we will populate the City of Stoughton with, and lots of posturing on the topic. And then in terms of networking, obviously, through the Chamber of Commerce, support from the Alders, and then working with WSTO on the coverage on how we can use your, this great asset you have in order to reach more people in the community.
Thank you, Lee.
Mm-hmm.
So looking at the next step here, I have the Plan Commission's tasks on the left and then City Council on the right, so what's pertinent to you tonight is adopting the citizen participation plan, then when we come back in June, adopting the final comprehensive plan. Some of you are attached to committee input, and then overall, just sharing the message that we're updating the comprehensive plan at any time, providing your own personal input. And with that, I can answer any questions now, or we are happy to answer via email, phone call, stopping at the office. Regina.
Sorry. Thank you. I was looking at your list of where you're engaging the public, and I was wondering if you could also include, you know, like the event, like the Juneteenth event, so you have a different part of the population, maybe the youth center and the senior center, so you're getting different, the young, more experienced in Stoughton, and then different demographics as well.
Yes. So we did not mention this within the presentation, but the goal is to find partnerships, so that's an example of identifying a partnership, as well as looking at the school board, talking to the high school students, middle school, providing kid-friendly activities. I will say with that do-it-yourself toolkit, it's for all ages, so kids have a portion of color, provide feedback. We did not include specific events, but they are, we're always willing to add more, we just have to notice them. So totally happy to provide a table at Juneteenth or other that you may recommend.
Thank you. I'm just trying to figure out, because some of those events, you're going to get the same people over and over again, up and down Main Street, it's the same people that go to gazebo, there's the same people that go to probably the coffee thing, but any of these, you know, having a booth at Walmart or, you know, other places that you're going to get different community members, I'm just... I mean, we do so many surveys, and it seems like it's the same voices, and I'd like to get more voices.
Yes. I will say with this team, our goal is to make sure it's an inclusive survey, making sure we're hitting, like I said, all ages but different demographics. So I believe this time it will be a little bit different, and we're excited to show you kind of our plan to attack all of those different events and people.
Related to what Regina was asking, on the social media presence in there, you know, it was heavily on Facebook. Facebook is a limited age demographic, let's say that. What about Instagram, X, Blue Sky, areas like that?
So we... Go ahead. So as this is a city project, we're utilizing the city channels.
Yep.
So that's where Facebook is easy. We do have a website that we'll have out there, so it's not specifically social media, but there is digital media out there.
Perfect.
I have a question regarding the website. Will it be an engagement platform or an informational platform?
Both. So the toolkit will be available there for download if you want to bring that to your organization. There'll be a contact us, and we'll have a link to the survey, but most of it will just be general information about what a comp plan is and why public participation is important. Yeah, that's why it's important to get the attendance at the in-person events as well. So that first visioning event in June is really important to have all of you there, bring your families, talk to your neighbors. It'll be open house style, so you don't have to stay the whole time, but please come participate. If you can't make it, like we said, we have that do-it-yourself toolkit, and we will be having the pop-up shops at Becker, so please stop down and participate in our activities. This isn't the standard, what you would see in other communities. We really want to make this available to all people, like I've said multiple times today, but yes, so as things come up and you think of ideas, let us know, and we will try to incorporate them.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other questions, council members? And as that was a public hearing, does anyone from the public have any comments, questions regarding just this comprehensive plan, public outreach? Adrian.
Great. I'm so sorry. In the committees, I do not see the sustainability committee, and the plan specifically highlights its incorporation into the comp plan. What's the plan for that?
Yes. So because the parks plan and the sustainability plan were completed in 2024, we are using your plans and your implementation goals within the comprehensive plan, we just didn't need a double dip, but we will have those conversations as well with the committees.
Okay. Great.
Great. Thank you. All right. And with no public comment about that one, then we can close the public hearing and then reopen the regular meeting. All right. Which leads us back into a regular public comment period. So if anybody has any general comments from the public, you could entertain those now. All right. Nobody jumping forward, so we'll go into communications and presentations of which you have to listen to me further. So I present a historical fact at the lead of each of the meetings, so here's what I have for you today. February 6, 1882 was an important day for Stoughton, as that was the day that the city charter was officially adopted. That moved us from a board and president situation to our current mayor and council situation. Also in February, in 1948, the Stoughton residents were rudely awoken at 6:00 AM by a whistle when it should have been 7:00 AM. So there was confusion. Also in 194... What's that? I'm unsure. It didn't have any detail about what the whistle was for. Also in 1948, a riderless horse was seen running down Main Street to the west. In 1963, the land purchase was recommended for where the high school currently sits. Also in 1963, the skating rink at St. Anne's was closed because of misbehaving youth. Yeah, scandal. In 1973, as we're having this this year also, there was an unusual winter, and by this time, all of the snow had melted, fairly close to how we have it today or by the end of this week. And then in 2013, the SRO proposal for the Stoughton Area School District was first discussed. Those are historic bits for today. All right. Next, then, we've got a presentation by Director Ramsey. Do you have any other historical things, Director Ramsey?
I don't know. I do have a little historical fact in here. It doesn't go quite far as back as 1882, but no. Did you, were you able to use the library to research some of that?
I have absolutely used the library for that.
Okay. Great. Yes, because we have, not only do we have all the microfilm going back into the 19th century, we have a lot of it digitized now and available on newspapers.com.
I went, in it being historic, I went old-school and did a lot of books.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, the senior center, they have some of the old bound volumes.
Yep.
All right. Well, I won't take up too much of your time. I know you have a full agenda, but good evening. My name is Jim Ramsey. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the director of the Stoughton Public Library here across the street. It's a busy time over at the library, especially for the library board of trustees. By now, you may have heard, we're recruiting for new citizen appointees to serve on the library board. That application process closes on March 14th, so if you know of anyone in the community who would like to serve, please send them my way, have them contact me, or you can also download an application on our website. In the next couple of weeks, we will also start recruiting for our student trustee position, a unique opportunity for a local high school student to serve as a non-voting advisory member on the library board. Again, if you know of anyone who might be interested, please send them my way or have them visit our website. But what I'm here to talk to you about tonight is the fact that chances are, one of you in this room will be likely joining our ranks. You may not have known that. That's because one member of the library board is a member of council appointed by the mayor as the council's representative on the library board. Jean Legaki, Alder Person for District Two, has served as our council representative for the last six years, as long as I've been director, in fact. But as you know, Jean is not seeking reelection to council when her term ends in a couple months. However, she has indicated that she would still like to serve on the library board, so she will be moving into one of the citizen appointee roles. I want to take this opportunity to show our appreciation. Jean, on behalf of the library staff and the library board, thank you for your service.
Thank you for taking me.
Yeah. You're very welcome. Glad to have you. So the Stoughton Public Library Board, here's our historical fact. Stoughton Public Library Board was established way back in 1901. It includes nine voting members and one non-voting advisory student trustee. As I mentioned, one of these trustees is a council member appointed to a one-year term by the mayor. Additionally, one trustee is a representative of the Stoughton Area School District appointed by the superintendent. This is all spelled out in state statute. The remainder of the board are citizens appointed by the mayor. We meet on the third Wednesday of every month at 6:30 PM in the library, and there is also a hybrid remote option for our meetings. The board maintains four standing committees, and all trustees serve on at least one committee, though we recognize that the council representative often has many other obligations, so we try to assign that representative to a committee that meets less frequently. The separate roles and responsibilities of the library board are spelled out in Wisconsin statutes under Section 43.58, which is titled Powers and Duties. The primary responsibility of trustees assigned includes exclusive control over all library expenditures, the purchasing of a library site, and the erection of a library building when authorized, exclusive control of all lands, buildings, money, and property acquired or leased by the municipality for library purposes, supervising the administration of the library and appointing a head librarian, that's me, who is delegated responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the library, and finally, prescribing the duties and compensation of all library employees. So this charge from the legislature provides library boards with considerable discretion to operate libraries as they deem necessary, independent of direct control by other municipal players. In providing this governance structure for libraries, the legislature was attempting to keep the library operations under direct citizen control and as far as possible outside the political sphere of government. No offense. Compared with other appointed boards or committees, library boards have extraordinary powers and responsibilities. Many other appointed boards can only recommend actions to an elected board or a council higher up the ladder of government. Library board actions are made independently of any further approval by other government bodies or officials, as long as such actions are within statutory authority. The independent authority granted to public library boards is intended to protect the historic role of the public library as a source of free, unbiased information. So that's a little bit about the library board and how it functions. If anyone has any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. You can also reach out to me directly by email. I'd be happy to talk with you further about the library and the important role that it plays in our community. So thank you for your time. I look forward to working closely with one of you in the near future. Thanks.
Anybody have any questions for Jim? Jean, how would you, how would you talk up the having a position on the library board? And how is your experience?
The library board is an amazing group of people, and it has, in the eight years I've served on it, two before becoming an alder, like there were signs around when I, and there was just a couple of us. There's a lot of people asking for our adult places, and we have like eight to 10 people to choose from. And so it's a really intentional, thoughtful group of people who want to get a nice mix of individuals to help our library keep moving forward, as, and so many of us are dedicated and know how vulnerable some of our institutions are right now. So pretty cool group of people, and we all do what we say.
All right. Thank you, Jean, for serving on that for the many years. And thank you, Director Ramsey.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right. Next item up is with the council consent agenda. Council minutes and committee minutes are in the packet, and the resolution for mayor's appointment and non-standing committees, does anyone want anything acted on separately? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Motion by Greg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, is that Abel or was that Christina?
Christina.
Christina. Got it. Thank you. Any other questions on consent agenda? All in favor? Aye.
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 And were any opposed? All right. Consent agenda is accepted. Council business, old business first. We've got ordinance 06 of 2025. This is a second reading coming from Utilities Committee, so that would be... Regina, are you able to talk over that one?
This is ordinance 06 of 2025 to adopt modification to subsection 74-12 and 74-113 of the City of Stoughton Municipal Code of Ordinances. It's, it just doesn't tell you anything, does it? It's, yeah, it's different, it's the utility budget, utility budget for the wastewater utility rates, and I'll just have, but I, so move first, and then I'll have Shannon tell us all about it.
So yeah, this is the second reading. We came here a couple of weeks ago for the first reading. We are amending our sewer rates. This was a budgeted amendment. The increase, budgeted increase was 8%. That is the increase that we're moving forward with tonight. The usage, the March 1st usage is when this change will take effect. Customers will see this on their April 1st bills. Recap this for the average residential customer, it equates to $2.65 additional every month for them on their wastewater bill.
Was there a second on the motion? Oh, Greg got the second on it. All right. Then any questions about this ordinance? All right. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
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 And are any opposed? All right, that ordinance passes. Thank you. Um, new business up is, well, first up is Resolution 9, 2025. Um, this one was also coming from utilities. We get to hear from Regina a bunch of times here.
Uh, this one doesn't really have a name. Um, it says, uh, Resolution 9 of 2025. It's a resolution, which is down below the, the usual box where it is, resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 2,100, uh, $100,000 sewage system revenue bond, series 2025A of the City of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin, providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds. An ISO move.
All right, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Greg.
And again, Shannon can walk us through this.
All right.
Yeah, so, um, here tonight, we have Casey Griffiths from Ellers included in our 2024 budget. We had a, um, debt issuance for water and sewer for our infrastructure projects. Um, that is moved to 2025. Uh, we worked with Ellers wrapping up at the end of the year. They did a little bit more work for us, um, putting the, the status issuance together. Um, so that's why it's delayed here into 2025. We do have Casey here tonight to walk through the, um, water and sewer debt issuance that we have. Um, he'll kind of give us the specifics. Good to go?
Yep, good to go. Let's do it. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Casey Griffiths. I'm a senior financial specialist and one of your advisors with Ellers. So, I'm going to run through, uh, your pre-sale report for, uh, this resolution, uh, which is for your, uh, sewer system revenue bonds, series 2025A. And I'm also going to talk about, um, your 2025B for your wa, uh, waterworks bonds as well. So, uh, the pre-sale reports that you have in your packets, um, I'm not going to go into, I'm going to kind of lump them together because the reports actually show sort of both, um, issues in there. Uh, I'll highlight, uh, mainly both sides of them, um, in this first report, and then kind of touch on a little bit with the wa, with the, um, with the waterworks report. So, um, if you go to the first page of the report, that's just the executive summary, um, and it's after all the resolutions. So, the resolutions that you're going to be adopting tonight are parameters resolutions, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Uh, but on the first page is basically just the summary of your proposed debt. Um, it's $2.1 million. Um, it's for 2024 and 2025 capital improvements, um, and the debt service for these will be paid through sewer revenues. Uh, your author, uh, your authority to issue these bonds is under, uh, section 66, uh, 0621 of the Wisconsin statutes. Uh, they're not, uh, general obligation bonds. Um, so geo-debt is obviously secured with property taxes. This is not. This is secured through revenues, um, via your sanitary uh, utility and your, uh, waste, or your water utility. Uh, the term is for 18 years. Uh, principal is going to be due May 1st, uh, starting in, uh, 2026, uh, and it goes through 2043. Um, it is not a bank qualified issue, which that really is a, not a major issue to think about here, but basically what bank qualified is, is if you issue more than, uh, 10 million in debt, and we believe that the city's probably going to be doing that, um, in talking with, uh, talking with finance, uh, that this doesn't qualify for, uh, it's not a bank qualified, um, uh, issue. And then rating, uh, you, currently, uh, the, uh, utility is not rated, but we are going to be doing a rating call, I believe, next Monday. Is that correct? Yes, next Monday, um, where, uh, the utility will receive a credit rating, which will then be attached to these, um, to this issue. Uh, if you go to the next page, uh, the, uh, main item on this one, so this is page two, uh, this is your parameters. Um, so this is actually what the resolution will be authorizing, uh, this evening. So, this will delegate authority to, uh, either the utility finance manager or the utility director, uh, to accept and approve the bids, uh, for the bonds so long as they meet the certain parameters. And we've listed those parameters out here. So the bonds, when they, uh, when the underwriter, uh, places, uh, a bid on it, the bonds will, uh, need to meet these qualifications that order them for, to meet the parameters. If they meet these parameters, then, uh, either, uh, Shannon, um, or, uh, the utilities director will be able to sign off on those, um, on those items. Uh, basically what that involves is the issue size cannot exceed, uh, 2.1 million. Uh, the maximum bid is 110 percent. Minimum bid is 98.75 percent with a, a true interest cost of 5.25 percent, and a maturity schedule adjustment is not to exceed 80,000 per maturity. So if we go to the next page, uh, that's really, uh, basically, uh, we're going to just kind of want to gloss over that. Not, not, that's not a big deal, but it's, uh, really not really pertinent to this evening. Um, it's basically just going through other considerations. We've reviewed your existing debts. Um, you're going to be, uh, uh, responsible for continuing disclosure, which you already do because you have debt issued, um, in the marketplace, and arbitrage monitoring, which we handle for you. Uh, and then on the, uh, page four, again, uh, just want to point out risk factors. Um, basically, remember this is a revenue bond, so these are secured by, uh, sewer revenues, uh, not by general, um, property tax levy. So there is a little bit of inherent risk in that because it's not backed by, uh, it's not backed by property tax revenues. Uh, we just want to call that out. Uh, again, not necessarily, uh, just a little minor, uh, little minor risk factor. And then other, uh, service providers that will be assisting you in this process. Uh, so your bond counsel is Quarles &amp; Brady, your paying agent, uh, is Associated Trust Company, and your rating agency will be, uh, Moody's Investor Services. So, on to page five. Uh, this is just, uh, the schedule, uh, that is proposed. Um, we're currently at the pre-sale review, uh, this evening. Last week, uh, we went to pre-sale review with the utility commission, uh, which was recommended for approval for both issues. Uh, the conference with the rating agency, uh, so with Moody's will be next week. Uh, that is set for, um, Monday. Uh, due diligence call to review the official statement, uh, that's actually the document that will be presented out to, um, for the mar, out to the market, is March, a week of March 10th. Uh, we'll distribute the official statement on March 13th, and then, uh, designated official award of sale, that's when the actual, uh, when, when everything's received on March, uh, 20th, and our estimated closing date is April 10th. And then there's just a list of contacts there, uh, from Ellers, uh, who are helping in this particular, uh, issue. Now, kind of to the financial, the actual specific financials. If you go to page six, uh, this is the capital improvement plan that we worked with staff on, uh, for this year. This shows your projects in the very left-hand side, uh, the purpose and department. So obviously wastewater and water are listed in there, and then their planned issue, which is all for either, uh, the 2025 sewer, uh, revenue bonds or the 2025 water bonds. Uh, and as you can see, the debt obligations there are total, in total between the two issues are going to be, uh, uh, looking at about 3.4 million in debt to be issued. Going to the next page, this is just the, uh, shows the sizing of the, uh, particular issue. Uh, that includes the, uh, projects, the project costs for the water and sewer projects, um, your debt service reserves. Um, those are funded, um, as you can see, the, those are funded, uh, via your issuance costs. So, because these are revenue bonds, you do have to have a debt service require, or, um, debt service reserve, um, uh, backing them up. Uh, so that's what that, that's what those numbers are there for. Uh, sewer, well, water, uh, water's not an issue, but sewer does have to have an additional, uh, amount included in the cost of issuance. Um, and then all of the fees, uh, the amounts to be financed, uh, our estimated interest earnings, which we basically split down the middle between, uh, water and sewer utilities, and that shows what your net bond size is at the bottom. Uh, 2.1 million for, uh, the sewer and revenue bonds, and 1.6 million for the, uh, water bonds. If you go to page eight, uh, that's an, just an allocation of your debt service over the next 20 years. Uh, that'll be, um, basically your principal and interest payments, uh, in total amounts. These will obviously be revised, uh, once, uh, the bids are getting in. This is just an estimate at the moment. Um, so this shows, uh, the sewer portion of that. Um, our rates, we've assumed based on a, uh, recent, uh, sewer revenue sale, uh, for, uh, the Oshkosh Sewer Utility, uh, shown there. So, those are what the rates are, but we obviously won't know exact rates until, uh, we get the bids in. And finally, on page nine, is your revenue debt coverage, uh, for both the water and sewer bonds. So, uh, we always want to ensure that there's adequate coverage, um, for, um, water, adequate revenue coverage for water and sewer bonds. Uh, the debt coverage, uh, as you can see, is in the, uh, fourth column under each, uh, so the blue is the water and the green is the sewer. Uh, both of those show, uh, what the debt coverage ratio is supposed to be. So, normally, uh, we want to see the debt, uh, ratio for water at 1.3, uh, the amount of what the proposed debt is. Uh, for, uh, sewer, it's, uh, 1.25. And as you can see, you're meeting both those thresholds. Water's a little bit, a little bit higher than what, uh, sewer is, but both of those are, uh, based on your proposed, uh, and existing, uh, you're meeting, uh, the amount of, uh, debt coverage that's necessary for net revenues. That's obviously revenues after expenditures, uh, have been, uh, after expenditures have been, uh, accounted for. And then the final page, that's just the 10-year trend in municipal bond indices. Uh, we usually, we, uh, include that in all of our reports. Um, and I'll just really, really briefly go over the, uh, 2025B, uh, waterworks revenue bonds, uh, basically, pretty much the same items, just the, the dollar amount is different, um, and a few, a few, uh, a few minor differences. Uh, again, these are revenue bonds. It's backed by, uh, water utilities revenue. Um, mainly want to go to page, let me see what it is here, just to show you, uh, the debt service schedule, because that wasn't in the, uh, the first report. So on page eight of the water, um, that will, uh, uh, that will include, uh, the, uh, allocation of debt service. Again, uh, also assumes a similar rate, uh, as what the sewer, uh, revenue bonds were as well, which is based on an Oshkosh, uh, sewer revenue sale in, uh, December of last year. So with that, uh, I know it's a lot of information, uh, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Casey, on the call date on there, you have it set as a week of. Is that so that you can float the actual call date?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. When we presented this, and particularly for the Moody's, uh, we hadn't solidified that yet. We do have that solidified, uh, but yeah, the due diligence, we're still just waiting on, um, I think dates from Quarles in order to, uh, to figure out exactly when they're, when they're available to do that call. So, yeah, that's why.
And these run similar to the way when we issue bonds, like CIP bonds and things like that?
Correct. Yeah.
We're always out there fishing for the best rate.
Yep, exactly.
All right, uh, council members, have any questions? Phil?
I have a quick question. So these fundings are for projects that are to take place in 2025?
So it is both. So we have, we are reimbursing ourselves for our 2024 projects. Um, and then we are also adding in, excuse me, um, our 2025 projects, which is a DOT project, and then we also have, um, Forest Milwaukee to Isham, I think is also the 2025 project. So it, it is both years. One we're, um, borrowing for in advance, the other we have already completed.
Okay. That's what I was hoping the answer would be, because I'm like, wait, these streets all just got resurfaced and this work was done. So, thank you for clarifying.
I do just, I wanted to also, um, just point out too, under that, uh, uh, debt coverage ratio that we were looking at, we did include the, um, the proposal to, uh, over that the, the water utility is going to be going for a, uh, a rate case, um, in the near future as well as potential increase in, in sewer, uh, revenues. So.
Got it. Alder Hirsch?
I was just, depending on the, the, the rate that you get on, what is it, March 10th, if in the future you could get a better one, can you rekind of refinance? I mean, you don't have a, a rate listed, but I mean, you're...
Correct.
But if you, in the future, the rates go down, can you like rekind of, like in a healthy refinance?
I don't believe we looked at doing a call provision on these, correct? I don't think we did. Yeah. 10 years, was there a 10-year call provision? Yeah, so if, yeah, um, oh, yes, yeah. So if there is a call provision, um, so that means is that, so normally, um, in order to be attractive in the marketplace, you don't want to, um, your underwriter wants some assurances, right? Their duty is to their investors, and they want to make sure that they get the best, uh, rates possible. So, what they want to make sure is, uh, we, that you, you have a certain amount of time before, uh, a bond can be called. Um, so there is a call provision here. So that's if rates do drop down, um, and it does make, uh, it's advantageous for you to refinance those, quote-unquote refinance those, which would basically be a refunding, um, and, and, uh, reissuing at a higher, or a lower rate. Um, we would certainly look at that, um, we'd look at that. And we do that year, annually, for all of our clients. Uh, we do that currently for your, for your current debt as well, too. So, if we take a look at what the marketplace is, what you're currently, um, what you're currently at, and if you're, I should say, if you're eligible too, that's the other point, um, is if, if, if it is a callable, um, a callable issue, then we would, we would certainly look at that. But they'd normally, you normally don't, you can't do it, like, next year if the rates all of a sudden fall, that's, that, that, you could be, you can't do that, unfortunately. I believe we have a 10, we had a 10-year. Is that, is that right? Yeah, 10? Yeah, so it's a 10-year. So that gives, that gives underwriters to, who purchase your debt, um, that gives them some assurances, basically, uh, that their, you know, their money is invested and it's at a certain rate at that, that particular time.
It was a good question, Regina, because we had just talked about that in finance committee, where we had just gotten the, the annualized report on, um, whether we could reissue or not reissue, but, uh, refinance any of them. None of them turned up to be. We, uh, we got them all locked in at pretty low rates, so.
Yeah, and a lot of communities right now for, um, more so on the GO side, um, is that, you know, everybody refinanced when rates went really low a number of years ago, and our rates have gone, gone up. So, um, you know, we always look at, though, we always take a look at. We do a refunding analysis for all, again, I said, all of our clients. And so if it would make sense for you guys to do that, um, at some point in time, we would certainly reach out to you and, and make you aware of that.
All right, any other questions for Casey? All right, seeing none. We had a motion and a second. Um, any further questions? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And are any opposed? All right, that resolution passes. Um, next one up, uh, R10, 2025, uh, Utilities Committee. Again, Regina, this is a continuation of the report that we just had.
Right, this is R10 of 2025, resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed 1,605, I can't do my numbers tonight. Uh, Waterworks Systems Revenue Bond Series 2025B of the City of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin, providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds. An ISO move.
Is there a second? Second by Greg. Oh. Um, what was that?
It was Abel.
Yep, either one. Flip coin.
Greg, forget it.
Um, Alder Hirsch?
Um, this was approved by the Utilities Committee last week unanimously, but again, I'll let Shannon answer any questions. It's similar to what we just talked about, but let's see if she has anything else that you want to add.
I have nothing further to add from the previous discussion.
All right, any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And are any opposed? All right, that resolution passes. Um, item number nine, which is Resolution 11, um, Utilities Committee or Utilities wishes to postpone that resolution as Jill could not be here tonight to present information related to that resolution. Um, so, yep. Motion by Greg to postpone. Is there a second? Second by Alder Hirsch. Um, any further questions on that? We'll see this one again in two weeks, probably. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And are any opposed? All right, motion to postpone is accepted. Um, item 10 is Resolution 12, 2025. Um, this one also from the Utilities Committee. Are you, are you sick of it yet, Regina?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Uh, Resolution 12, 2025, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the write-off of Stoughton Utilities delinquent account balances and invoices deemed uncollectible as of December 31st, 2024, and ISO move.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Caravella. Um, Alder Hirsch?
Sure, this is what usually comes at the same of the year. This year, um, was the fiscal impact is $8,212.03. impact is $8,212.03. On that year resolution, you can see where there's a list of uncollectible balances. A lot of them, either people moved, or people are no longer with us, or they just can't find them. So this is actually a lower amount than, you know, previous year, so that's a good thing. And it's just something we have to do, because we can't collect the money. They've tried. And I guess, Shannon, if I'm not wrong, you still kind of, if people show up, or if they move back into town, you'll collect them, but you've done everything.
Yep. So we do, we do utilize the TRIP, the Tax Refund Intercept Program as long, as well as state debt collection, SDC through the Department of Revenue. These balances, we were not successful at this time. Some of the ones that we could submit, if we don't have their driver's license or their social security number, we cannot submit to those entities. So the, some of those are included in the event that we do receive dollars from either of those programs, or if someone moves back into our service territory, and we can add this balance to their account, we will absolutely do so and reverse the write-off that, that's occurring tonight.
Shannon, how long back do you allow or have the delinquencies from? Are they one year, two years?
I believe these are 24. I think we might have, we have a couple from 23 that we are hoping to collect. But a majority of this comes from 2024.
Oh, 21?
The very top is date issued is 9/24/2025.
Oh, on the customer, okay. Yep.
Do you have any cutoff year in policy? I'm sure, because isn't it like about, is it five years that you can't really get too far beyond?
I was going to say two, is what, is what I was going to say. I know it, we can keep them with the state, I think, for like five or seven years, I think. But we will attempt to collect as long as there's an avenue for us to collect. But unfortunately, some of these, we weren't able to go back and to get anything from them.
Okay. I just wondered if you, if you had something written in policy specific about its X number of years, or?
We do review them annually. We'll go through all of the other accounts receivable, as well as all of the, the billing adjustments, and determine at that point to see if there is any collectible hope for any of them. We, but we do look at them every year and determine whether or not there's viability to get our dollars back. I don't know that we have a policy that has a set number of years.
Okay.
But I could certainly review that.
I just remember something similar in finance, where when we were going through and looking at fines and things that, that were not collected by municipal courts and that. And Dave would always joke that some of the, some of the fines were old enough to drink. So.
I don't want, I don't want any of that list to be that old, but that's, that's not the goal.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other questions on that? All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And are any opposed? All right. That motion passes. Next is R13 of 2025. This one is coming from the Plan Commission, Alder Caravello.
And this is R13 of 2025 Recommending the Adoption of a Public Participation Plan for the City of Stoughton, Wisconsin. And I so move.
Second by Regina. Whoops, sorry, Alder Hirsch. Any other questions on that, based on the presentation that we had prior? All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And are any opposed? All right. That motion passes. Item 12 is Resolution 14 of 2025, and that one is coming from Finance Committee. Older person, Jensen.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Resolution 14 2025 Approving an Amendment to the Agreement with GIP Glacier Marine LLC. And I'd move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Hirsch. Alder Jensen?
I have to review this myself.
All right. I wasn't at this meeting, so I'm, I'm sure.
I could, I could talk a little bit about it, if you'd like. So, I don't remember when, but basically, Finance Committee met because the purchase and sale agreement that the city currently has with GIP Glacier Marine, it required them to generate $550,000 in tax increment, or property taxes, by the end of '24. At that time, they, I believe, were about $77,000 short, Dave. Yeah. So there's a, a letter of credit that is in place where the city could draw upon the shortfall if they didn't generate the needed tax increment under the agreement. Obviously, they fell short. They asked for the city to amend the agreement, to give them more time. So they are, they have two buildings left, I believe, so they would finish construction at the end of this year. Finance Committee recommended changing the parameters of the current purchase and sale agreement to say that, basically giving them an extra three years, but having a new letter of credit in place in the amount of $130,000. So there's a lot of cushion there, where the city could draw upon that in the event that there's a, a default, where they wouldn't generate the necessary increment under the, this agreement. So the number's still the same at $550,000. I think presumably they would get it at the end of this year, Dave, or is it, you know how much increment they would be generating at the end of this year?
The problem is that the end of this year is, would be based upon January 1 of '25 assessments.
Yes, it's a two-year.
So you've got a two-year lag. So that's why this is essentially extending the contract another two years.
So they, there is a current letter of credit that is valid until March. The bank has already approved the new letter of credit, and they would deliver it to Dave on Thursday of this week, if the council wishes to amend the current purchase and sale agreement. That's basically what the amendment does.
Can you remind me what buildings these are, or what businesses these are in?
We call them the GrowSo, the GrowSo buildings that are out here, kind of across from Emmy Roth, those incubator buildings.
Okay.
All right. Anybody have any other questions on this resolution? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And are any opposed? All right. That resolution passes. Next up is Resolution 15 of 2025. This one had come from Finance Committee earlier tonight. Alder Jensen?
This is Resolution 15 2025, mending the 2024 adopted budget for departmental deficits and expenditures exceeding budgetary authority. And I would move for approval.
All right. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Nino. Alder Jensen? Says what it says.
Well, Dave, I want to throw in something on this. It basically is just to cover the deficits, just like it says, expenditures exceeding budgetary authority.
I don't really have anything to add. The language in the resolution is pretty clear.
Yeah, pretty states it. Does anybody have any further questions about this resolution?
Is this normal? I don't remember us.
I think this is something, Dave, you needed to have done.
This is the third year in a row we've done this.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But this seems awfully large compared to other years. Is that true, or is it always this much, that we're way off?
If you're looking at the general fund, it's not really way off, but this also includes every other fund, including the capital projects funds, where you can have some big swings. Nicole Marie, could you go forward into the charts, please? So this is showing all the departments that exceeded their, in this case, the expenditure authorities. So you're looking at about $0.3 million for the general fund, if you could keep going lower. Another $0.8 million for the tax increment districts, another $0.2 million for all the special revenue funds combined. Next page, please. And so the governmental funds by themselves were about $1.4 million combined. The business type funds, which is only EMS, was about $0.1 million. If you have any questions on specific funds, Nicole Marie and I can attempt to answer your question as to broad level, what occurred there.
Dave, I have a question. So a lot of, during the, the budget period, do we add in like, like a 10 to 15% contingency on most of the projects? That this is what we don't.
With levy limits being so tight, we don't put contingencies in.
No. And that's what we're actually seeing, is the contingency.
It's a catch 22, because if you don't give yourself wiggle room during the budget adoption, then you're going to have a greater chance of potentially going over. If you want to give yourself wiggle room at year end, you got to add contingency fluff, whatever you want to call it, into the budget. And with the levy limits, we can't do it.
Now, why does that prohibit contingencies, I guess?
Okay. So the general, for the departments that are paid for by the tax levy. In round figures, and I'm going from memory, we could go up $220,000 for the entire city. Well, that isn't enough to give everything that we want. And if we were to say, we're going to add $30,000 to give ourselves some contingency, we'd have to subtract $30,000 from somewhere else.
Okay. But we have enough money in the general fund to pay for basically our, our contingencies that are in the budget, which is what this is.
Yes and no.
Okay. So where are we?
It's coming from the general fund, yes. But the problem we have is that the majority of our tax increment districts are underwater and keep getting worse. The amount that we had, that the TIDS owed us end of year '23, it was about $1 million. End of year '24, it was about $2 million. That extra amount of loans to the TIDS is considered as non-spendable fund balance, which lowers our unassigned fund balance. Based upon the numbers that I looked at two weeks ago, the general fund is going from, and I'm going from memory, 39.8% of budget expenditures retained in the unassigned fund balance to 24.5%. So we are below our goal at this point. So yes, we have the money, but we don't. Depends on how you look at it.
All right. Seeing no other questions, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Do we have a choice?
Technically, the choice is we have to basically go back to the vendors and say, here, we're returning this, give us our money back. I realize that there's nothing we can do. In a perfect world, all department heads would be closely scrutinizing their budget to make sure they do not go over budget.
Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes so far on the nays.
Point to clarification. If we do not have eight ayes, the motion fails.
Yeah, that is correct. You need a two-thirds vote to amend the budget.
I didn't hear anybody.
So we need?
I'm an aye.
Okay. So Jenna?
I'm an aye.
That's three, four, five, six, seven.
We have seven.
Just sitting here with their mouth closed. I think we all protest, but what are you going to do about it?
The other, the other part of that is, is, as I told Regina, I said, you can make an amendment to put a moratorium on creation of TIDS until we clean up what we have. And I make that motion.
I, I think we would need to have a separate agenda item, so that could be a future agenda item, but I don't think we could do that tonight.
I retract my aye. I can't make an amendment to it.
So I, understanding correct, you are rescinding your aye vote on the motion as opposed to rescinding your motion for a moratorium. Is that correct?
No, I can't make a motion for a moratorium according to our council.
Right, I understand that, but you s-
So I am rescinding my aye vote. I, I am retracting my, my aye vote for this amendment.
Okay.
We have three on aye.
Call for roll.
And five in the row.
Brett did-
Yeah, Andy, we do a roll call vote on this one?
Yes. Was next, Galen.
Aye.
Mieski.
Nay.
Jensen.
Aye.
Nino.
Aye.
Payton. Oh, excuse me, he's absent. Schumacher.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Aye.
Utler. He's absent as well. Hirsch.
Aye.
Shurlucky.
Aye.
Lagaki.
Aye.
Abel.
Aye.
That's nine ayes, one no.
All right, the motion carries.
How many are absent, two or three?
Three.
Nine ayes, one no, three absent, that's 13.
I'm sorry, I had Mieski absent for the first roll, and I, he arrived late, I take out some-
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, you're welcome.
Why we have Dave doing the math for us?
How appropriate.
All right, that motion does carry. Alder Mieski, I would definitely say if you want to add that into-
Yes.
An agenda item, okay? We will make, uh, make that happen. All right. Item 14 then is Resolution 16 of 2025. This one is coming from Finance Committee earlier. The committee took no action on this one due to needing some, a little bit more clarification on what that, the details around this resolution. So committee didn't take any action, then who presents it?
So, yeah, just, I think if we just have, open it for discussion.
Yeah, but who, who announces it, Finance or RDA?
Um, I think this would be Finance, well, Greg could introduce it.
Introduce it, yeah, just introduce it, and then, and then we get some discussion. Yep, okay, so that would be Resolution 16 of 2025. No, we just did that one. Sorry, 17, right?
Around 16.
16?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, redevelopment, okay. Resolution 16 of 2025 to amend the 2025 adopted budget for Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. And this was discussed in Finance Committee as stated by Alder Schumacher. And no, no authorization was made by the committee, or no decision was made by the committee. We're looking for additional information, and we're hoping that the RDA Chair, Alder Hirsch, can help us out with that.
Eric, and I can, Rick and I can take team on this. What happened was is that last fall, usually the RDA is, the Executive Director is either our Finance Director or our Planning Director. Both no longer wanted to be the Executive Director of RDA, so we needed to hire an Executive Director from outside. And since Becker Professionals have been part of RDA and has been a consultant on RDA for probably 20 some years, we felt like that was our best option is to hire Gary as our Executive Director. There's a lot of work, especially with the Riverfront Development that needs to happen, that a chair such as myself with another full-time job just, isn't able to accommodate, as well as I don't have the expertise about what all needs to be done for a redevelopment. And if we want to move this forward, we need somebody that's skilled and qualified and knows the city well. And so with that said, in October, we met with Rick and AJ and the mayor and Becker Professionals to try to come up with a contract and a list of duties for the Executive Director. And then somehow it just kind of got delayed. And then, so that's why it wasn't brought to us earlier. But is now Becker Professionals kind of wants a contract? And so that's what we're trying to do here, is they're, they're still getting paid right now, but it's to their best interest to actually work under a contract. And so, Rick, if you have anything else to say.
Yeah, and so this is, since it's a, the RDA is a separate legal entity. So they are part of the city, but under state statute, they're legally distinct, so they are able to enter into their own contracts. They can exercise separate powers in redevelopment areas that are designated by the city. So this agreement is with the Executive Director is three parties. It's the city, the RDA, and Becker Professional Services. But since the work is for the RDA, it's coming out of the RDA budget, so that's why there's the budget amendment. I, I think a lot of the work is geared towards the Riverfront Redevelopment project. And I don't know why, but there hasn't been a reimbursement agreement executed. We've reached out to the developer to sign it and execute it, but there's been no action taken on that end. So some of these expenses could be covered by the developer. But nonetheless, these are expenses that fall under the RDA's budget. So there's, to increase the expenses, the, the budget needs to be amended.
I think a lot of the questions in Finance regarding the resolution was at $60,000, we're looking for a little bit more granularity into what that $60,000 was, was going for.
There is a whole slew, and maybe, Rick, I don't know why it was on there, there is a, yes, there is, all these different obligations for that. So it, it's a lot. I mean, not only taking minutes, but also organizing with, I mean, we have meetings with the developer every other week. Well, actually lately, it's been every week and sometimes two or three times a week for multiple hours. Brett and I don't get paid, but we, but we need to have somebody get paid that organizes it. There's a lot of paperwork that needs to be submitted, there's a lot of tracking, there's a lot of accounting. I mean, it's a lot of time. And so is probably Dave and Chris can attest to, being Executive Director of RDA is, especially when there's a major development going on, is a time sink.
Does the council feel as though you've had enough information to be able to vote on this resolution? And/or if someone were willing to put a, put a motion forward for the resolution?
I can put a motion forward. I just, you know, this is a resolution, did you ever see that?
Greg introduced it, but didn't move it.
You didn't move to approve? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. And it, and just to let you know, if we don't have an Executive Directive, it's really hard to run the RDA efficiently.
All right, there's a motion by Alder Hirsch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lagaki. Are there any other questions? Does anyone need any further clarification to be able to vote on this?
The general fund.
And we have been, we'll renew efforts to get a cost reimbursement agreement with Alexander. So Gary and I have been talking about that, and we've conveyed to them that we're not going to do any more work on the project until we have a cost reimbursement agreement with Alexander.
Any follow-up, Tom? All right, if no other question, no, Adrian?
Sorry if this is in here, how far does the 60K get us? Through the agreement with Alexander?
It gets us through the end of, um, October, just because Gary wants to retire.
Okay.
And it's a not-to-exceed amount?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't mean that he's going to actually spend that, he just, you know, it all depends on the work and stuff.
Alder Lagaki?
So any sense of what's going to happen in post-October and into 2026? Is there a plan?
Not yet, and that's another thing that we need to start really seriously thinking about. So, yeah. Be on RDA's agenda, believe me.
Alder Hirsch, you mean as far as whether, who would be the Executive Director or? Okay, all right. All right, any further questions on that? All in favor, aye of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? All right, that resolution passes. All right, item 15 is Resolution 17 of 2025. This one was through Finance Committee earlier tonight. This one also had no action taken or no recommendation given by the committee, needing a little bit more information on how that's all going to work. We're hoping, Rick, you could maybe enlighten us on that one. But I can have Greg introduce it first.
Uh, Resolution 17, 2025, Mercy Dental, Stoughton Family Dental, receivable. And as he stated, it was not, no action was taken.
So with this one, I, I guess I'm not quite sure on, as to how the, like, process-wise, how there, there came to be this deficit. I guess, I don't know if that's the right word, but I, and it may have just been some sort of administrative or, or timing issue. We have a signed cost reimbursement with them, I don't think they ever provided the deposit. Or maybe the cost reimbursement agreement was signed after the Lers' analysis and after the city recommended denial of the TIF request. So I'm not quite sure on what the procedure, procedural history was there as far as timing goes. But with this amount of money, we, since there's no deposit amount to collect against, the recourse would be go to small claims court to collect if they're not paying the city what's owed. We do have a signed cost reimbursement agreement, that, that much I know. So the, the contract is very clear that they have to reimburse the city's expenses for evaluating their TIF requests. Obviously, they were not, um, they did not agree with the city's determination. So if that's throughout, the city wanted to go to collect it. Have a hard time believing that you would recover the, the full amount just based on the fees that it would take to, take it to small claims court. We could certainly initiate a, a discussion between Stoughton Dental and my office just to maybe try to collect some amount of money from them, rather than writing off the whole, or before taking any action with writing it off, we could try to make a, a collection effort. But otherwise, the recourse is would be you either write it off or go to small claims court.
What's the whereas Becker Professionals LLC indicated on February 7th that their firm will issue a credit to the city on the subsequent invoice? So that means that, are they taking care of that? I mean, I'm, that's what I assume, so why are we even talking about small claims courts?
Greg, your, your mic is not on.
Sorry, that was part of the problem that the Finance Committee had, is we weren't, weren't able to understand exactly how that was going to happen. We, we were hoping that Gary would be here tonight so that we could get a little bit more information on how that was going to transpire.
Uh, to go back, Mercy Dental Group, Stoughton Family Dental, did put in a TIF request for their projects. Then they signed a cost reimbursement agreement. Then the city said, no, we're not giving you a TIF request. Then they said, we're not paying you. I tried collecting multiple times, working with Becker. Becker is the one, and it's in the email, is included in packet, Becker's the one saying, go ahead, write it off, and we'll issue a statement credit later. As was brought up at Finance Committee, I don't know when that statement credit's going to occur. So modified accounting rules say I have to essentially treat this as deferred revenue because unless I get the money by Monday, I can't consider it as revenue for '24. Therefore, it's in a sense going to be written off. But the write-off is then reimbursed by Becker, assuming they follow through. I did send a copy of the resolution and attachments to Gary Becker, asking if this was the intent of his, and I did not receive a response back.
How long ago was that email sent to Gary?
Last week, sometime before the agenda and packet went out. I'd have to look in my emails.
If you scroll down, the email is part of the document, February 7th.
Yeah, so I thought it says, Dave, if we need to, just write this off and we'll correct the city on the next invoice. So when is their general invoice? That was just a, a week ago.
Well, they only issue invoices once a month. And Alder Jensen can talk about the concerns that the Finance Committee had.
I think our, our biggest concerns were, you know, if we have cost reimbursement contracts with, with entities, whomever they are, and they just decide they don't want, and they sign them and then don't want to pay for them, then what's the point of having contracts?
I agree. I mean, so if we can go to a small claims court? Or do you take it out on their, put it on their tax bill? I mean, how do you, how do you collect?
So we wouldn't be able to do like a special charge here to put on the tax bill. I think what I would do is, my office can send a letter to them to say, because I haven't engaged with them at all. I think it's just been at a staff level. So I could send them a letter saying that we're demanding- So I could send them a letter saying that we're demanding payment of this, and if not, we're taking this to small claims court. And maybe they'll want to come to some sort of negotiated settlement. So we don't have to go to small claims court and we can get some of the money back. But if that's the direction the council wants to go, we can certainly proceed that way.
So the $6,000 were actual expenses that the city incurred because of the TIF. Is that correct? Or are there late fees involved in this? I mean, what what's all in this $6,186?
Nicole, can you go one page up, please? On your screen. And yes, those are all costs incurred by the city.
I think we have to go back. I mean, I mean, I'd rather not have our consultant have to pay for I mean, they brought clients to us hoping that we could do some pool development. And if the clients enter into agreement with the city and then just because they ask too much or the city that's the risk that they take. I guess. I don't know. I mean, I don't even remember why we refused.
The the project wasn't going to generate enough increment. So the building already has value, and if they were to redevelop it, it was going to generate some additional increment, but it wasn't enough to really
Pay off the TID?
It wasn't going to pay anything off. There would have been a very small amount of actual like increase in property taxes that their project would generate.
I would like to just double, triple verify that they did sign an agreement, a reimbursement agreement that they would cover these costs.
Correct.
And they are choosing to not do so.
Nicole Maria, if you go down two pages, I think, no, maybe another page. I think I attached the cost reimbursement agreement and the signatures are on the document. There's their signature. And there's the city's signature and the city attorney's signature.
I'm good with taking them to small claims court. They're trying to not pay a debt that they agreed to pay. Pretty straightforward to me.
For this one, well, Dave, this isn't going to help you any because if you don't have the money by Monday, it's not going to, it's going to
It doesn't, it can't affect the books anymore for '24.
Sure. So with that, because we don't, we won't have any real, we won't have any real impact for what we have budget sitting there right now, then I would say to at least vote postpone where this resolution is until Attorney Manthe's office can can draft their letter about seeking any sort of restitution for it.
Go along with that.
That a motion?
Let's make that a motion.
All right, motion to postpone the vote or postpone action on Resolution 17. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lagaki. Sorry, what was that, Deb?
I can get a letter sent out. I'll try to get something out this week. If we want to push it back 30 days, maybe so we can
Sure.
see if there's any movement.
Say for the March 18th meeting.
So you write them a letter and then if they don't respond, then we go to the claims court?
Okay, any questions on that motion? The following one there, what's the one after that? Yep. So we will bring it back on March 25th meeting. Any other questions on that motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion to postpone until March 25th meeting is accepted. Item 16 then is Resolution 18. This one is also coming from Finance, so Aldo Jensen.
Okay, Resolution 18 of 2025 to amend the 2025 adopted budget. Fund 400 construction carry forwards, then I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nina. Aldo Jensen.
Yes, this is what, what is it, 25 or 250,000? I think that's what it was. Or is it not getting lined up? Let me get to the right one. Back too far, sorry. There we go. Okay, it was the decreased expenditures by $250,000. This was apparently projects that have not been completed yet or for costs that were not incurred during the construction projects. And so this would be to just simply adjust the budget. I think that
Favor?
Yeah. Sort of. Sort of.
Dave can explain that a little bit better.
Correct, it's lowering the amount of expenditures that the Public Works Department is allowed for 23 and 24 projects. And that's because we issued too much debt in 23 and 24 and haven't spent the money. The money's there, but we borrowed it too early.
So what happens if? So now we have this 250,000. Does that go against item number, whatever it was, further up on the the agenda when we had a couple of million? Can we pay back down 250,000 of that debt with that money? Well, there was
I'm sorry, which debt were you referring to?
Yeah.
Department overages, I believe.
That's not the same as debt. That is exceeding the budgetary authority.
Okay. So that's all right, I guess I'm not, I'm a little confused about if you exceeded budgetary authority, isn't that a debt? As opposed, I mean
Well, exceeding budgetary authority means you've used more cash than is available. This is saying, this resolution is saying we want to spend 250,000 less for expenditures than what we had budgeted. The adopted budget included estimates for carry forward. And at year end, Director Haber and our engineering firm looked at and said, we've got 250,000 excess budgeted. That's all this is doing.
Was excess budgeted not, but you then said something about we took out the loan too early. So we had this excess of 250,000. So we still have an excess of cash of 250,000?
Yes, but
But you, and so we can't put that towards the department deficits, is what you're saying?
Okay, the department deficits are citywide. This is only the construction fund. And the bond proceeds have to be used for construction.
Oh, okay. That wasn't what was, okay. But then what happens to that 250,000?
All we are doing here is saying, Brett, you can't spend the entire budgeted amount. You have to spend 250,000 less. And Brett is the one who gave us the numbers.
I understood that, Greg, Dave.
Nicole Marie, I'm obviously not explaining myself well enough.
It just reduces the budget to the levels that they said that they are going to spend. It doesn't mean we have extra money to fund other things because we funding for it's not needed any longer.
Okay, what I was confused about is when when Dave said that we already took out that loan or that money. And so if you took out the loan for this extra 250,000, but now you're not spending it, what's happening to that extra 250,000?
So the 250,000, depending on when it was borrowed, whether it was bonds or notes, if they're bonds, they can only be used for the construction projects that they were allotted for. If they were notes, we can move them around and spend it on other debt borrowing. So yet to be done is the analysis on the 410 fund, which is where the rest of the capital improvement projects are. When we get to that, we anticipate that those will be over. And in the scheme of things, that 250 gets zapped by the overages in the 410 fund.
Of other construction projects that of this year?
Yep.
All right, that's what I was trying to figure out, where that money actually is and where it's going to be resolved.
So on the general fund side, we're looking at just cash itself. And that's where this is borrowing for capital projects and only dealing with the budget amendments rather than funding from fund balance overages that have already happened. In this case, we have underages savings. And we're reducing those budgets so that in good faith, departments couldn't go, well, I have excess budget. I want to go spend it on XYZ. That's happening. We're reducing the budget to be in accordance with what the project plans actually spend.
Reserving that to cover the projects that will be completed in the future.
Yes, thank you.
That it was borrowed for, but that, but it didn't make it in that year in the area that was supposed to be done. It'll be done in a different year. So it's
Right, but I guess what you said, it was earmarked for specific projects. But if those specific projects are done, can you then use it for other construction projects? Okay, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out the rules that you keep on saying and what is, what can actually be done with the 250,000? That's all I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I feel like this was the discussion we're we're missing a part of the discussion that we had in Finance, which was this is titled a carry forward, and there was an uncompleted project. So when the project is completed, these funds, by moving them, basically carrying them forward to the next year, they could be used to complete the project that was intended to be completed the previous year. That's how I understood it. Not that it, there couldn't be some movement with the money also, but that that's not really the intention. Am I summarizing?
It is, and this is, this is part of the complexities of within Finance Department having to live within three budget years at some points like you're doing right now. And then same thing with construction, some of those are two, three years. So even though it might have been drawn for one year, they may not complete until many, a year or two later. So monies are just moving from here to there or when there happens finally. That clears mud? Perfect. Any further questions on on this resolution then? All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, resolution carries. Resolutions, or an item 17 is Resolution 19, 2025. This one coming from Plan Commission.
And this is Resolution 19 of 2025 certify, a certified survey map to combine the properties at 2605 Cromwell Court, Lot 27, and 2500 Jackson Street, rear portion of Lot 15, Kettle Park West, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Christina, yep. Aldo Caravello?
I think I'm just going to hand this over to Chris because this is, we're just basically reapproving something that was pre-approved, what, in 2023? But it it ran into a deadline and just they've requested that we reapprove what we pre, what we approved a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I mean, so essentially this was approved in 2023, but wasn't filed. If it's not filed, it has to go through the motions again. I brought this back to Plan Commission with direction. They went ahead and pushed forward the CSM to you guys, but the conditional use permit and SIP approval has to go through the steps again. That's actually coming up at the March meeting. So that's where we are.
Aldo Mieske?
Was the question regarding land dedication or rectified?
It is not. It is going to be addressed in the next, in in the conditional use permit. They can't start building until you guys approve that. I'm working out a plan with Honor regarding that. That's one of the conditions for the CUP. If the CUP, they can't get occupancy until it's satisfied, so. But as far as the land division goes, this is, this is a, essentially it's a lot line adjustment at this point, really not even a new lot. It's just a lot line adjustment. And theoretically, it could get filed and then somebody else could come in and try to put something there that's the same zoning use, but they'd have to go through you guys.
Follow up, Tom?
No, my answer, the question was answered. Thank you.
All right, great. Any further questions on the resolution? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, that resolution carries. Our line item 18, we will like to postpone on that one as some other information is still in the works in order to describe that one a little bit more fully. So motion to postpone by Jensen, is there a second? Second by Mieske. Any other questions on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hold on. All right, that motion carries to postpone until at least the next meeting or until we can get the sufficient information about that.
Now I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Jensen, second, second by Mieske. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for listening to me.